Test one, two. Test one, two. Un, deux, trois. One, two. Test for English. One, two, three. Test one, two. One, two. Test two for English channel. One, two, three. Un, deux, trois. If the interpreters could please do a test on the French channel. Interpreters, test on the French channel, please.
Test one, two.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Bienvenue. Welcome to our first Transit Commission meeting of the term. We acknowledge that Ottawa is located on unceded territory of the Algonquin-Anishnaby Nation, whose culture and presence have nurtured and continue to nurture this land.
The city of Ottawa is located on a unceded territory of the Algonquin-Anishnaby Nation, whose culture and presence have enriched and continue to this territory.
We have one regret today from councillor Brockington, who cannot be here. I would like to welcome all of the new members joining Transit Commission this term. And I'll ask our committee coordinator, Eric Palau, to please do a roll call.
Councillor Brockington. Councillor Carr.
Present. Councillor Hill.
Present.
Councillor Leaper.
Here.
Councillor Lowe.
Here.
Councillor Menard.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Vice Chair Currie.
Here.
Chair Gower.
Here.
You have a form, Chair.
Eric.
I just wanted to start, first of all, by welcoming staff and delegations who are here today. We have a number of delegations who have registered. We are going to have a staff presentation first, followed by comments from our delegations. And commission members will be able to ask questions from each delegation. And following that, we'll go back to questions for staff. We're here today, looking back, it's almost four years ago that our council started formally talking about e-buses. Back in February 2019, there was inquiry from our colleague councillor McKennie back then. In June 2021, Transit Commission and city council gave a clear signal to our staff that we were ready to begin conversion of our diesel fleet to electric buses. And we've had a number of updates and milestones along the way, but this is a significant one. A report back to us and some decisions to be made by commission and by council on the overall funding for the project. And today, we're going to get an extensive update on the procurement plans as well as the technical results. When Renee introduces city council on Wednesday, I believe she remarked this is not a project, it's a transformation. So it is a very important, very important initiative for the city of Ottawa. I've also, we've had so much attention over the past four years on light rail, and rightly so, that's another major transformation for a city. But in the foreseeable future, buses will still be the backbone of our system. If you took transit today in Ottawa, very likely you took a bus, and that will continue to be the case. So we need to put as much attention and focus on buses as we do on light rail going forward. And I'm looking forward to the conversation for today. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Renee and her team, and they can walk us through the presentation. Bienvenue.
Merci beaucoup, Chair. Good morning, everyone. Bonjour tout le monde. Je suis très, très, très contente d'être avec vous ce matin.
I'm very happy to be with you this morning. It's our first meeting at Transit Commission, and it's always a pleasure to be with you here, especially since nature has put her white coat on to salute us. And yesterday, during the storm, our electric buses performed greatly during this major storm.
And I would like to start with a short video just to show you how well our e-bus performed yesterday. I hope you enjoyed that video. As you can see, the electric buses performed well in yesterday's snowstorm. Our zero emission buses are part of our regular service, and we're extremely pleased with the results of this pilot so far. The zero emission bus program is about more than buying buses. It's about transforming our transit system. The report before you today confirms something is available, and we're ready to move forward with the implementation process. Without the 350 million grand from Enforzature Canada and the 380 million loan from the Canada Infrastructure Bank, our zero emission bus program would not be possible. Maybe we can start sharing the presentation, please? But I recognize that there are many of you here today who are new to OC Transport's zero emission bus program. So I'm happy to walk you through the years of work that has brought us to this today. We also have several staff here to answer all of your questions. This is an important initiative, and we will spend as much time as required to give you the information you need. Next slide, please. Next one. We are happy to provide an overview of the zero emissions bus program and to provide an update of the pilot project. Before we begin that overview, we would like to review the recommendations that council deferred to the Transit Commission to consider today. Next slide, Eric, please. Thank you. Ultimately, the recommendations before you today relate to the latest step in the transformation project. This project has been running for almost two years with council's oversight and is about to move into a more active phase. Today, we are asking for you to authorize and approve the use of existing city funds and funds granted to us from the federal government to pay for charging infrastructure, facility upgrades, and electric buses as part of the 2023 budget. We are asking for your direction to bring forward yearly requests for future bus procurement as part of the annual budget process. Finally, we are asking for your approval to create a reserve to facilitate our repayment of the CIB loan agreement. In April 2019, the city declared a climate emergency and directed staff to establish 2030 GHD emissions reduction targets. Staff were also directed to intensify concrete actions and to achieve the new targets. Then, in January 2020, council approved the climate change master plan. The master plan includes a commitment to reducing 100% of the city's GHD emissions by 2040. With nearly 1,000 buses in our fleet, OC Transport is a major contributor of GHD emissions. The move to zero emission buses will move the city closer to achieving its greenhouse gas emission reduction goals, and will have Transit Ottawa into a clean, renewable, and resilient city. Switching from diesel buses to battery electric is one of the most impactful actions the city can take to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Given the importance of this action, in June 2021, council directed OC Transport to only purchase zero emission buses in the future. Their direction also eliminated the purchase of diesel buses. Next slide, please. Ottawa is one of many transit agencies across Canada and around the world that are transitioning their fleet to include electric buses. OC Transport is a member of the North American E-Bus Experience Group. This working group is made up of representatives from over 30 transit agencies across Canada and the United States, and it's focused on the adoption of electric buses. Members include New York City, Toronto, Montreal, Boston, Chicago, Vancouver, Edmonton, Association du Transport Urbain du Québec, and Metrolinks. Not only transit agencies, but manufacturers are shifting towards electric buses. Based on our research, as the transit industry transitions, the price of electric buses may drop and availability is expected to increase. We want to also note that as manufacturers shift their focus to electric buses, it could become more difficult to procure diesel-powered buses.
I can say that I'm a member of the International Union of Public Transportation since 2010, and since 2017, I'm a member of their Board of Management of the International Union. And throughout the world, everybody is going through the same transition toward the bus, electric buses.
As you can see here, there are a number of other cities around the world who have made a strong commitment to adopting battery electric buses. Examples of strong battery electric adoptions across the world, including some cities with harsh winters like Ottawa. Next slide, please. In 2021, shortly after council approved the zero emissions bus program, council approved an amendment to the Auditor General's work plan to include an audit of the program conducted in Sprints. The Auditor General's approach has been both collaborative, helpful, and independent. We have been able to incorporate the EG's recommendations into the project as it has evolved. To date, two Sprints audits have been completed focusing on technology and performance and e-bus procurement. The next Sprint audit will be coming to the Audit Committee in February. We look forward to continuing to work with the Auditor General. We appreciate our independence, our external insight, and recommendations. Next slide, please. Following council direction to transition to a zero emission bus fleet, we did lots of research to ensure we were recommending the most environmentally friendly, cost-effective, and reliable solution. After careful consideration and analysis of multiple zero emission energy sources and technology used across North America, battery electric buses are currently the best option to start the transition to a zero emission OC Transport fleet. City staff engaged with experts from several organizations to develop the recommendations for the zero emission bus program. The recommendations were based on studies of technology alternatives, energy supply and financing options, and results from studies in other Canadian cities such as Montreal, Toronto, Calgary, Kingston, and Winnipeg, to name a few. Based on our findings, several sources of energy and technologies were not recommended, including hybrid electric, compressed natural gas, and renewable natural gas buses. These were not recommended because they are will not zero emission and therefore do not meet the council policy direction to eliminate all greenhouse gas emissions. These buses are also not eligible for federal funding. Trolley buses with overhead wires were not recommended because of the high cost of buses and overhead infrastructure. And hydrogen fuel cells were not recommended because of the high cost of buses and high cost of production and transportation of hydrogen. Ultimately, battery electric buses were and continue to be the best choice. They are now the most widely used zero emission technology in the transit industry and are on the roads of many Canadian municipalities. Battery electric is a heavily researched, quickly developing energy solution, and it's expected that the technology will continue to see rapid improvement range and battery performance. We have full confidence in our zero emission bus program.
And I would add that since 2017, I was working in my old position in Montreal. I implemented the electrification strategy for the Société de Transport de Montréal. I know very well electric buses. I know the technology. So I will be sharing that with you.
Close here as well. He's a program manager of a zero emission bus program. Merci beaucoup. Thank you very much. With you.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, Chair, and good morning, members of the Transit Commission. To introduce myself, maybe for the first time to the Commission, my name is Richard Holder, and I am the Director of Transit Engineering Services within OC Transport. In terms of, if we could go to the next slide, please. So I'm going to talk a little bit more about the details of the zero emission bus program. And as Madame Emelkar has mentioned, this is a transformative program for the city of Ottawa. Next slide, please. We should start with what we have in our current fleet. So just going through the oldest members of our fleet, the 2005, 2006 new Flyer 40-foot buses. We have 95 of those in the fleet currently, and they're expected to be phased out by 2025. We have the 60-foot articulated vehicles that came in between 2008 to 2011. We have 356 in the fleet. We have 356 in the fleet, and they are expected to be phased out in 2026. In 2012, we bought 73 double deckers, the ADL E500s. They're expected to be phased out in 2026 as well, and we also bought in 2015 to 2019, another fleet of 78 double-decker buses that will remain in service until 2030. In 2019 to 2021, we purchased 249 Nova buses, which will remain in the fleet until 2036. And then our most recent purchase is the battery electric New Flyer Excelsior 40 ebus. We currently have four that have been running in the pilot phase, and I'll be talking about that in a little more detail later on. Next slide, please. This is a graph that was presented to council in 2021. We have not updated it with current figures, but when we come back to Transit Commission in the future to provide further updates, we will be updating this slide. But this is an indicative slide just to indicate that the program that we're embarking on, it's a slow progressive transition. We are not jumping in and purchasing a whole fleet of buses to start off with. We are taking it very progressively, and we're expecting in 2024, as has been discussed, the arrival of 26 electric buses. And then the number of buses will increase progressively over the next few years until 2026, 2027, which is the end of this five-year program. Next slide, please. So the Zero Emission Bus Program is a dedicated program within OC Transport. We have a dedicated team that has been working on this program for a number of years. We have a number of partnerships. Importantly, for today's discussion, we have the partnership with the Canadian Infrastructure Bank and Infrastructure Canada, who are providing funding and also loan facilities. Another key partner for the city of Ottawa is Hydro-Whattaw, and Enviree. Hydro-Whattaw, of course, will be providing the electricity supply for the new buses, and Enviree will be engaged to help with the design and the build, installation, testing, and commissioning for all the charging infrastructure and off-site improvements. We will also be working and have been working with TTC, Toronto Transit Commission, on the ebus procurement. And so we have an agreement with TTC once they have finished their procurement exercise to have the opportunity to engage with their preferred bidders. In terms of the procurement, the current plans based on approval moving forward today is that we would be receiving 26 e buses in 2023, 77 in 2024, and then between 2024 and 2026, the remaining buses, up to a total of 350, would be supplied. On the infrastructure side, we have the design and the construction of energy management systems and charging infrastructure within the facilities at OC Transport's 1500 Saint Laurent facility. We have upgrades to support the bus fleet electrification. Those facility upgrades include structural reinforcement to the roof of the buildings, the existing buildings, to support charging infrastructure. We have new sprinkler systems that need to be installed. And we also have in the plan as part of the $315 million Infrastructure Canada grant, the ability to build a new covered garage for the charging of the fleet of buses around 2024 to 2026. From an accountability perspective, we have been providing and we will be providing regular updates to Transit Commission. And as part of the biannual capital budget process, we will bring forward for approval that the purchase of the next tranche of electric buses. So this is very much a phased step-by-step process. Next slide, please. As has been discussed, this program has been going since 2019. And so in terms of the timeline, going back to Q2 2019, we have the Transit Commission approval of the Zero Emission Bus Pilot Program in June. The first four electric buses were procured in January 2021. And in June 2021, we had the city council approval for converting the full bus fleet to zero emission buses. In Q3 2021, the first buses and chargers arrived at this Saint Laurent facility for OC Transport. There was an unveiling of the pilot buses at the end of 2021, and then the first pilot buses entered service in February 2022. At that point, we were using plug-in chargers, and about the same time, we were also installing the overhead pantograph chargers. In Q3, we had the CIB agreement, and in Q4 of 2022, just a few weeks ago, we had confirmation of the INF C funding. Next slide, please. So this is, for those who haven't seen it already, this is the new bus that has been used for the pilot phase. It is a New Flyer Excelsior 40, 40-foot electric bus. It very much has the same look and feel of our existing diesel fleet. The actual earlier prototype for this bus was introduced in Winnipeg in 2012. So this is not new technology. There have been improvements over the period between 2012 and 2023, the biggest improvements being on the battery technology. But this type of technology has been in use in Canada for many, many years. It's a 40-foot bus. It has a long range of between 280 and 350 kilometers. We have indopo charging. As I mentioned, we have two different types of charging. We have plug-in charging, which is more familiar for an electric vehicle. But we also have pantograph overhead charging. And in terms of moving forward out of the pilot phase and into full implementation, then the plan is to continue just with the pantographs. Because we end up clearing the floor of the garages. It's a much tidier way of implementing and a tidier way of charging. The buses have 36 seats. We have a diesel auxiliary heater for winter weather. So during normal operations, the the internal passenger compartment is provided with heating and cooling by the electric batteries down to a temperature of around 5 degrees. Below 5 degrees, the diesel auxiliary heater kicks in, and that helps to save the battery life and extend the range of the vehicle. The vehicle is also fitted with an acoustic vehicle alerting system, the AVAS, to meet all accessibility standards that are currently in place. And the vehicle also has regenerative braking, which is good for the battery life, good for recharging of the battery, and also good for the life of our brakes. Next slide, please. The charges that we've decided to move forward with will be the overhead pantographs, as I previously mentioned. Currently, we are using two Siemens overhead pantographs, which have been working very well through the pilot phase. We have plug-in chargers that will not be continued, but the current ones that we have will be relocated within the facility and will be reused. Next slide, please. So in terms of the bus and what's different about our pilot phase bus, as I mentioned, it's an electric 40-foot bus. The power comes from an electrical battery system. We have six lithium-ion batteries located both on the roof and at the rear of the vehicle, and they provide all attractive power. So we're moving from a mechanical system to an electrical system. So we benefit hugely from reduced maintenance costs by the elimination of the mechanical systems associated with the combustion engine. We don't have fuel lines. We don't have diesel tanks, and we don't have a transmission. So the vehicle is much simpler. Otherwise, everything else about the bus is the same as the buses that we have on the road today. Next slide, please. Kind of moving on to the other big component of the ebus program is the facility upgrades and the power supply redundancy. So the layout on the right is a map of 1500 Saint Laurent Garage and Office Building. The pilot project has charging occurring at the South Garage, and moving forward in 2023 and 2024, we would expand the upgrades to that facility such that we can accept 136 electric buses for electrical charging. Following on from that, we would move to the next facility, the North Garage. And then ultimately, we would be building a new facility, a new covered charging area for 84 buses. As well as the charging facilities and buildings, we will have a new onsite substation that will be provided by Hydro-Whattaw. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned earlier, one of our key partnerships is with Hydro-Whattaw. So we are working with them on the design and procurement, build, and testing commissioning of the before meter and after meter electrical infrastructure. So the before meter infrastructure includes the transmission upgrades, off-site hydro stations, improvements to the hydro distribution system. And then the after meter, the work that's being undertaken onsite, we will have dual substations with dual feeds that will give us redundancy in the event that there is a problem with either one of the feeds or one of the substations, then we will have a redundant pair. We will have onsite distribution that will be provided by Enviree, onsite transformers, and a main switchboard, as well as all the charging equipment. This slide indicates plug-in chargers, but moving forward, we'll be using the pantograph dispensers. An important note here is that whilst we do have the dual feed, should there be an outage that impacts the whole of the eastern end of Ottawa, then we will have two gas-fired generators onsite that will be used as a backup should the full power go out. And they will be able to provide redundant charging power for the buses. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This provides a summary of the pilot program that has been underway for the last 12 months. I think we've been very successful in validating the effectiveness of the use of battery electric buses in Ottawa. We have the history of quick charges occurring in four hours, which was very much in line with the specifications for the bus that allows for charging of the buses overnight within our covered sheds. In terms of the range, we've covered almost 220,000 kilometers, which is approximately 50,000 kilometers per bus, which would be pretty much in line with what a regular bus would be covering. And so we've been able to complete those miles without any significant disruption. As part of the program, there is the need to train staff, both operators, technical staff, support staff, maintenance staff. So we've already embarked on a significant training exercise. This will have to be expanded, of course, in the future as we bring on more buses. In terms of the range, we are looking at what was expected, which was between 280 kilometers and 350 kilometers. The lower end of that range tends to occur at lower temperatures. So the efficiency of the lithium-ion batteries does reduce as we get below zero, but we're still able to meet the operating requirements and the route requirements for which these buses are running on. And in terms of where we've been using these buses, we've used them across many different routes in all different types of weather. They have performed very well, both in the winter of the early 2022 and also the performance this winter with freezing rain events and with heavy snowfalls, they have been performing very well. Next slide, please. So some of the key performance indicators that we will be coming back and reporting on regularly is there will be a focus on reliability and a focus on performance. So from a performance perspective, we'll be monitoring the range of the buses. We're meeting or exceeding the expected range from the manufacturer. And then in terms of reliability, the mean distance between failure, which is an industry-wide indicator for the reliability of the buses, the e buses are performing at approximately 12,500 kilometers MDBF. And this is slightly above the average of the current fleet when we take the four different buses together, which is around 11,200 kilometers. And in terms of the definition of the MDBF, mean distance between failure is an industry standard measure of reliability that expresses the average distance traveled by a bus before a service disruption due to a mechanical defect. A higher MDBF indicates greater reliability. Next slide, please. Okay, thank you, Chair. I finished my portion of the presentation, and now I will hand over to my colleague, Isabel.
Thank you, Richard. So I'm Isabel Jasmine, Deputy City Treasurer, Corporate Finance. And I'll be going through the details of the report you have before you today. In June 2021, oh, next slide, please. In June 2021, we provided an estimate of 986 million to implement a ZEB program for 450 buses. Much has happened since that time. Staff working with expert advisors further refined the requirements to implement this program. The existing facilities can accommodate 350 ZEBs. An extra 100 buses would have required the additional cost of a new facility, which was not contemplated in 2021. Even for the 350 buses, there were additional costs for structural upgrades and fit up of the existing facilities, covered parking, and advisory and project management costs. Also, prices have increased since 2021, including the price of ZEBs. Next slide. The June 2021 report to Commission and Council approved the purchase of zero emission buses for all future transit bus fleet needs as long as financing was secured and the city did not spend any more than we had planned for in the Transit Long Range Financial Plan for the purchase of diesel buses. Since the cost of ZEBs is twice the cost of diesel buses and requires an upfront investment for the charging infrastructure, facilities upgrades and fit-ups, equipment and other transition costs, the conversion to zero emission buses would not be possible without the loan from the Canada Infrastructure Bank and Infrastructure Canada Grant. The city's funding will come from the capital envelope for diesel bus replacements currently planned for the next four years. That will be put towards the cost of the ZEBs and the CIB loan will cover the difference. The city's funding is not approved as part of the report before you today. 55 million was approved in 2022 for the bus replacements. And each year going forward, the annual amount for bus replacement will be approved as part of the budget process. Today, we are only asking for budget approval for the $350 million grant and 75 million drawdown on the CIB credit facility to begin the procurement process for the first two and seventy five million draw down on the C I B credit facility to begin the procurement process for the first two tranches of ZEBs and supporting charging infrastructure and transition costs. Next slide. The C I B credit facility was approved by the Debenjer Committee in August last year. The total value of the credit facility is three hundred and eighty million for four hundred and forty six buses. But since we are only implementing three hundred and fifty in this first phase, we only need two hundred and eighty nine million of that amount. And only seventy five million for the first two tranches of buses in two thousand twenty three and two thousand twenty four. The C I B loan is affordable because it is cost neutral for the city. The amount we will borrow will pay for the difference between a diesel bus and a ZEB. And then we pay that loan back with savings that we achieve. Eighty percent of the savings go towards repaying the loan with interest and the battery replacements. And the remaining twenty percent of the savings stay with the city to cover any other unexpected costs. C I B is taking the risk on the savings expected from converting to electric, including the useful life of the ZEB, maintenance costs, energy efficiency and battery replacement costs. That means that if we don't achieve those savings, we don't have to pay back the loan or the interest. The city bears the risk of achieving the planned kilometers per ZEB annually and any electricity price increases beyond what is currently projected. Operationally, we have quite a bit of control on mileage. And with respect to electricity prices increases, we expect that inflation will be much greater for diesel going forward. This is a great deal. If we were to borrow these funds ourselves, we would have to pay four times the amount of interest at around four percent. Would have to pay back that loan even if we did not achieve savings. Next slide. The Zero Emission Transit Fund is a grant from municipalities to convert to zero emission transit. Without this fund, the ZEB program would not be possible. It took us several years to accumulate the funds just for the first four pilot buses. The June two thousand twenty one approval from Commission and Council to purchase ZEBs delegated authority to staff to negotiate and settle a funding agreement with I N F C. We submitted an application on the basis of that approval. The application process took much longer than expected. It started with an expression of interest in November two thousand twenty one in order to receive approval to even submit an application. And with the caveat that we had approval from council for this program. Our initial application submitted in April two thousand twenty two was for five hundred million dollars in grant funding to help pay for four hundred and fifty ZEBs and supporting infrastructure with a spend plan to two thousand twenty seven. There were multiple iterations and modifications and additional information requested throughout two thousand twenty two until the application was eventually approved for three hundred and fifty million, a year and a half after we received approval from council to proceed. We lost the time at the front end of the process, but also lost time at the back end since the eligibility period for the Z E T F ends in March two thousand twenty six. Whereas the C I B credit agreement is available until December thirty first, two thousand twenty seven. We continue to have conversations with I N F C to identify future funding opportunities and extending the timeline for this program, which have all been very positive. Next slide. This overall program is cost neutral to the city and is estimated to achieve eighty million dollars in savings over fifteen years for the city. The price of a ZEB is twice the price of a diesel bus, but the lower cost to operate a ZEB generates enough savings to pay for itself. Furthermore, C I B is taking the risk that if the city does not achieve the savings, we don't have to pay back the loan. Although we must make all commercially reasonable efforts to achieve those savings. C I B is doing this to encourage municipalities to advance their ZEB program while significantly minimizing the financial risks. The conversion of three hundred and fifty buses within three years would have been impossible without the C I B loan and the I N F C grant. I will now pass back to Richard.
Thank you, Isabel. If we could move to the next slide, please. So in terms of the risks for delaying a decision on moving forward, the funding will only be available until March two thousand twenty six for the three hundred and fifty million dollars that we want to use for facility upgrades and for our agreements with Hydro Waterway for the purchase of buses. So the longer we delay, the shorter the period is to try and implement the program and take full advantage of that funding. The shortened timeframe of two thousand twenty three to two thousand twenty six is due to circumstances beyond our control. Other municipalities are also receiving the Z E T F funding. And like Ottawa, looking to advance their ZEB procurement at the same time. So there is a bit of a crunch coming in terms of the number of municipalities wanting to launch procurement programs. There is a limited supply and high demand for the zero emission buses that could impact availability and cost. Which is likely to be compounded the longer that we delay with making the decision. The delays would require additional investment in maintaining the existing aging diesel vehicles that are scheduled for replacement. And there is also an impact on the reliability of those aging vehicles as they get beyond their regular lifespan due to the higher maintenance requirements for aging vehicles. Next slide, please. Moving forward, these are the key program milestones between two thousand twenty three and two thousand twenty seven. With the green light on approval of the funding, we will be able to move forward with the Envirey Agreement, which is for the electrical supply and charging infrastructure with Hydro Waterway. We can move forward with the procurement contract for the first tranche of buses. We will be able to commence in Q two, two thousand twenty three, the facility upgrades. With the expectation that those facility upgrades will be ready in early part of two thousand twenty four when those electric buses start to arrive so that we can immediately start using testing and commissioning and using those buses as soon as they arrive. Between the middle of two thousand twenty four and early two thousand twenty seven, we will have a process tranche by tranche of procuring and onboarding the remaining buses to make a total fleet of three hundred and fifty electric buses. And highlighted there again is the the end of the I N F C funding in March of two thousand twenty six and the C I B funding ending in Q four, two thousand twenty seven. Thank you for your time. We're very open to having questions. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. So we will go now to our public delegations. We have five people registered this morning. The first speaker is Joey Cypels from Enbridge Gas. I think Joey's online. I think all of our speakers are online this morning, in fact. Joey, you may have to accept a prompt to come into the panelist room, so we'll give you just a moment.
Good morning. Are you able to? Okay, perfect. I'll do my Oh, it looks like I'm unable to share a screen. Am I able to share a presentation or is it just verbal?
You're not able to share directly, but have you sent it already to the clerk's office?
Uh, yeah, that's okay. I'll just do a verbal one.
Okay, okay. And if you want to send that after you're done, and we can get the clerk's team to circulate that to commission members as well.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Uh, good morning, Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this morning. My name is Joey Cypels. I'm a business development specialist for Enbridge Gas. Um, I just want to present and ask the Commission to maybe take a step back and consider renewable natural gas transit. Uh, in two thousand and twenty two, when a Canada's leading transit association, Cutric, did a study of renewable natural gas buses, they did it across five North American fleets. And they had several findings, including that compressed natural gas buses running on renewable natural gas can be cleaner and cheaper to operate than battery electric and fuel cell electric buses. In the study, they provide the operational and maintenance savings of these buses. And this is all without government grants, government funding, include clean fuel standard credits. One of their findings were also even in locations with clean electricity, which would be Ontario, R N G should be leveraged as much as possible. And I quote, "R N G in the fuel mixture can help N G Vs achieve carbon neutrality or potentially a carbon negative intensity." This can result in N G Vs for natural gas vehicles reducing more greenhouse gas emissions than battery electric buses. Where is this being done in Ontario? The city of Hamilton now operates one hundred and fifty seven natural gas buses. Their council too has voted to not buy any more diesel buses. And they're anticipating by two thousand and twenty six to have over three hundred natural gas buses. In two thousand and twenty one, they announced Ontario's first carbon negative bus. So the question is, you know, why preach for zero when you can do better? The renewable natural gas story, you can fund all the capital with the savings, be net zero or even carbon negative. You can do this all without government grants, government loans, or clean fuel standard credits. So what do you get with a renewable natural gas fleet? You can have a carbon neutral fleet or lower carbon. It's commercially ready, proven, over one third of buses procured across the United States are natural gas buses. It works for all vehicle sizes, including sixty foot buses. There's no range limitations, including in the winter. For one vehicle replacement, you don't need to add additional battery electric buses to cover the same routes. And you can refuel vehicles in minutes. The city of Calgary is able to refuel six natural gas buses within five or six minutes. And there's a reliable and stable fuel supply. And I'll close things out just for some consideration. The city of Ottawa has voted to not only buy zero emission buses. Are these battery electric buses actually zero emission buses? If there's diesel auxiliary heaters, there's no after treatment treating that diesel. So those buses do have diesel tanks and they are burning diesel fuel. Uh, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much, Joy. There's a couple of questions from our commission members. Member Lowe is up first.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your presentation, Joey. Um, I do have some questions about the natural gas technology that you highlight Hamilton has used. Hamilton, as you know, has a very long history using C N G and more recently R N G buses. And the T T C has also had experience with C N G buses, but in the mid nineties, early two thousands, maybe they opted to convert them to diesel because of high costs, maintenance costs, fuel costs, et cetera. So what is the difference between the maintenance costs between C N G and R N G?
Uh, yeah, so a natural gas bus, Cutric in their study found that maintenance is about seventeen percent lower in natural gas buses compared to diesel buses. A lot of transit associations deployed natural gas in the early nineties. That's the early technology. Natural gas buses now don't have those performance issues. So that's why, you know, across British Columbia, every transit association in B C is running natural gas, Calgary is doing it. The technology doesn't have the same performance issues as, you know, the early nineties.
So yeah, basically you're saying that it's evolved and it's improved and all that stuff.
Yeah, a hundred percent. Yeah, I recommend reading the Cutric study. It goes very much in depth on the on the maintenance piece.
Okay, thanks very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Tierney.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Joy, for coming out. Just a quick question. You say compressed natural gas. Uh, I've seen my residential home energy bills double and, you know, those wild fluctuations, gasoline's the same. But let's face it, natural gas is at extraordinarily high rates right now. Is it the same type of fuel that would be used in these buses?
Well, if the goal is to get to net zero, you'd be using renewable natural gas, not conventional gas. Yes, conventional gas has went up in price on, you know, in energy terms, a gigajoule, natural gas is around eight dollars a G J. Diesel fuel is fifty, fifty five dollars. So the city of Hamilton is probably saving fifty, sixty thousand dollars per bus per year on their natural gas buses. But with renewable natural gas, and I believe the city of Ottawa produces some, so you could be producing your own fuel for these natural gas vehicles. Um, but even if you were to buy it outside of Ottawa with a long term agreement, you could be a hundred percent fuel hedged. So, you know, renewable natural gas is twenty five to thirty five dollars a gigajoule. So you'd have no volatility in your annual fuel budgets, which is a big reason why the city of Calgary decided to go with natural gas. Um, the volatility on a month to month basis with the diesel fuel was the main driver, not even the fuel savings.
Thank you. And you just answered my question about the volatility. So thank you very much for coming out.
Okay, I'm seeing no more questions. So thank you very much, Joey, for your presentation today.
Thank you.
Our second speaker is John Reddins. Good morning, John.
Good morning. And I like, good morning. Welcome to, welcome, Chair, to your new position and Vice Chair and to new members on the Transit Commission. I'd like to also remind everybody we're on seated territory, the gauntlet, and some maps show Mohawk. We are here today to talk about the electric bus purchase. I see that reports that the ten bus less can be purchased by the parabus fleet with the new electric buses instead of maintaining a fleet of buses that are passing their lifespan. Some of these buses are using mileage ranges from the multiple seat buses from about two hundred thousand kilometers to three hundred thousand kilometers. And the rest are averaging three hundred to five hundred thousand kilometers. As a former General Motors parts manager, the cost to keep these buses will be staggering in the next few years. Some of these are so noisy it is unbearable. I know two bus drivers have recently got hearing aids installed. When they complain to their supervisor, no one answers. What noise? I see things on buses, the rattles are so bad that I see the safety pylons being wedged to stop some of the noise and the window latches have been issued since the start of O C got these buses. I lost a classmate in nineteen seventy nine when the school bus flipped over and the latch let go. Went to say the way she went out the window like a bullet. We don't need any more delays on bus purchases. Para, we don't need on para, we don't have accessibility taxes anymore. Majority of people with disabilities and mobilities are dependent on transit. I've been told, I've been told before the pandemic by a superintendent wanted to start buying new purchases for paratransit gradually. And the last year, the message has changed to electric buses, but the lack of other evaluators, some bigger truck companies are changing their fleet over to electric. It is time to get moving. Last three years, the debate on electric buses have been been good debates, but it's time to move on, move forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. We have at least one question, Counselor, pardon me, Commissioner Minard.
Uh, thank you very much, Chair. Thanks, John, for your presentation. I just wanted to mention that in a, you know, a transit tour we had on the parabus replacement, it was discussed. You know, obviously, market technology is a big thing and how we're heading towards this direction, but I guess it's a little more difficult for those uh, smaller heavy duty vehicles, um, which would align with, you know, the para replacements. Um, I do note that there's manufacturers like Proterra and Grand West Transportation and a few others on the West Coast that are producing kind of these smaller buses. And so I did ask O C transport staff to look into the potential for a replacement of some of these paravehicles uh, with with electric as a potential pilot, just given your presentation about noise and the needed production of these vehicles for for service. So I just want to ask your your feedback on on that is is that the sort of thing you're looking for is at least as we're piloting these other electric buses to pilot on the para side as well if we're able to? Is that something that you'd be interested in?
Yes, I'd be interested in that. I know it's difficult right now because our buses are what they call is fifty, sixty series bus, series and and they're a little they're different designed, they're built on they have a chassis and then they build the caps on top of them. And and I think, I think, yeah, it's time to move on. We went through the last set of buses uh, when Chair Deans was, when Diane Deans was Chair. That's when we went through the last process of new buses and and the noises and the and the the rattles and everything else, even the air air design of these buses now are starting to weaken. So you're starting to feel like we're in the old buses again.
Okay, well, I look forward to the new procurement of those parabuses and thanks for your delegation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kerr.
Thank you, John. I just wanted to thank you always for your advocacy on transit. I know you're my resident of my ward and you've always been an invaluable source of information for me with respect to all sorts of issues relating to transit and accessibility. So I just really wanted to thank you for taking the time to come out today.
Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, John. I imagine some of our commission members, as we get to questions for staff, will also have some questions, just to clarify the paratransit fleet and priorities for bringing that. questions, just to clarify, uh, the paratransport fleet and, uh, priorities for, um, bringing that, uh, up to date and improving the experience as well.
Mister Chair, I, I was frustrated that I didn't see anything in the presentation about paratransport and that is disheartening.
Okay, thank you, John. Our third speaker today is Dr. Kate Rico-Mini. Kate?
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. I really do appreciate, uh, you giving me the opportunity to speak today. Uh, my name is Kate Recumini and I come to you on behalf of CNIB and as a member of the sight loss community. I wanted to, uh, raise a concern I had with the report. Um, I read through the city staff report and they mentioned that there are no accessibility issues with this report because the paratransport bus fleet is not being updated. Um, this is in fact not the case, if you will let me explain. Uh, so as someone who is blind, I use environmental cues, uh, and environmental sounds to sort of know what's going on around me and navigate streets safely. This includes the noises that, uh, vehicles like cars make. Uh, as you may be aware, electric vehicles are a lot quieter than, uh, conventional, you know, combustion engines, um. And that can make them, uh, you know, more difficult to detect, which could actually be dangerous if I'm trying to cross the street or such. Uh, and so the battery electric buses do constitute an accessibility concern if they do not make enough noise. Um, it's for this reason why in December twenty-second, um, the government of Canada introduced regulations to require all electric vehicles to, um, include a acoustic vehicle alerting system or Avis, um, so that an electric vehicle will always make noise if they're going twenty kilometers, um, an hour or less. That way, um, when they're going faster than twenty kilometers, the sort of noise of the wind of their passage is loud enough for the vehicle to be detected, but when they're going slower than that, electric vehicles can be, uh, nearly silent. So the Avis kind of steps in and provides that auditory cue, uh, which is important to not only pedestrians like myself, uh, who, uh, rely on that auditory sound, but also others like cyclists or, you know, people who may be just a little bit distracted while they're walking, um. I was really happy to see that the pilot OC transport buses do have an Avis equipped. I had the opportunity to uh, ride one of the buses when they were being piloted in the spring and the Avis system on that bus works quite well. Um, so I was really happy to see that, uh, but I wanted to highlight this issue because it is crucial that all buses going forward and electric vehicles in general have this, um, have this Avis system so that they don't cause hazards to pedestrians. Uh, I really do appreciate that the city of Ottawa is looking for ways to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and be more environmentally friendly, uh, and electric vehicles do do that, and that's great. But this cannot come at the expense of the safety of pedestrians, as I'm sure, uh, you can appreciate. Therefore, uh, CNIB is asking that any electric vehicles purchased by the city, whether that's regular buses, um, mini buses, the paratransport buses, maintenance vehicles, or any other vehicles um, be required and have that sort of in the, in the, um, stipulations for buying the vehicles to have an acoustic vehicle alerting system that cannot be disabled. Road safety is of incredible importance to CNIB and to, uh, the people we work with, as you can imagine. And city of Ottawa, uh, can help and city council can help by ensuring that the next generation of publicly owned vehicles does not introduce new hazards to pedestrians who are blind or partially sighted. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Commissioner Lowe has a question for you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Kate, for your, uh, presentation there. Um, pedestrian warning systems have been, uh, important, um, in, in helping people with, uh, sight difficulties, um, know, know where they are. And I know you use a lot of environmental cues to, to, to assure your safety, ensure your safety. Um, there were some transit systems in Ontario that piloted, um, pedestrian warning systems, even on their diesel buses. So because the engine's so far back, it, in some cases, it actually is required on, it may be required on diesel buses as well. Are, are you aware if the, um, regulations that you mentioned for Avis, are, are they required just yet by the federal government? Or is it something you want perhaps Ottawa to, uh, spearhead, for example?
So. I admit that I have not read the regulations in detail. As you can imagine, regulations can be quite, um. What's the word I'm looking? Quite, quite detailed. Um, and so I'm not quite sure if it's regulations on all new vehicles coming out, or if it pertains also to sort of existing electric vehicles. I, I, I do just want to highlight that regardless of exactly when the regulations specify a vehicle should have an acoustic vehicle warning, you know, system enabled that the city of Ottawa, you know, can get ahead of the curve by just requiring it now from the outset.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Minard.
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you so much for the presentation, Kate. Um, I, 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 my understanding from a, a direction of staff and a report back is the, the current OC transport electric vehicles, uh, do have the AVAS installed, the four that are there. Um, and that our procurement, I believe, would, would ensure that the future, uh, buses would also have this technology in line with the federal government's, um, uh, new regulations. That's my understanding of the way we're going. But I will make sure to, to check in with staff on that question when we get to questions there and, uh, any, I just see if any response to that, or i- if that's your understanding as well, uh, if you wanted to mention anything in addition.
Yes, thank you. Um, like I said, I just want to make sure that it's stipulated in a requirement, uh, because it's one of those things where I feel like if you, if you don't specifically ask for it, it's very easy to miss, but it is crucial for people like myself to be safe while traveling.
Absolutely. No, I really appreciate your delegation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, and thank you for making sure this remains at the top of our minds, uh, in this conversation. Thank you, Kate, for your presentation today. Um, our next speaker, it's a pair of speakers. We have Raymond Lurie and Mike Banks from the Electric Vehicle Council of Ottawa. I see you're both on the screen there. So, um, welcome.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Can you put up the presentation, please? Oh, there we go. Thank you. So, uh, Mike is the alternate actually, and he could also answer questions if there are some after, but, uh, anyways, we are the Electric Vehicle Council of Ottawa. I'm the president. The next slide, please. And, uh, the next slide talks about our, uh, history. So, uh, EVCO is a, uh, volunteer, hundred percent volunteer nonprofit organization. We are, we have no affiliation or funding from industry. So unlike one of the previous presenters who was, uh, trying to sell you on, uh, buying his product, uh, we have no affiliation at all and no commercial interest behind this. So we are subject matter experts on EVs of all sizes and we've been, uh, promoting the electrification, the electrification of the transportation system mainly to reduce greenhouse gases, but also because they are better, uh, solutions. Next slide, please. So, uh, in terms of, uh, uh, diesel, uh, so there's no question that diesel is dirty. Um, you know, we tend to think about, uh, transit as being um, something that's environmentally friendly, but in fact, if you're using diesel buses, it's not that environmentally friendly. So uh, bottom line is, uh, OC transport, uh, uses about four liters of diesel to take one passenger a hundred kilometers. So that's the average over the years, uh, the year. So, uh, so to take one passenger a hundred kilometers, it takes four liters of diesel, uh, which is not very clean. So, uh, it's, it's obvious we need to go to something cleaner. Next slide, please. And, uh, energy evolution, uh, Ms. Amalkar already talked about this. Um, so the transit fleet accounts for a full, uh, fifty-two percent of the corporate emissions that the, uh, uh, the city has. So not addressing, uh, transit, um, in, in a timely manner is, is is going to make the city miss those, uh, targets that, uh, have been, uh, adopted by council, uh, a few years ago as part of the climate emergency declaration and then energy evolution project. Next slide, please. So in terms of costs, I've seen some, uh, op-eds that seem to question, uh, cost savings, um, and I think Ms. Amalkar also and others have talked about this. So we expect maintenance, this, these are numbers that we developed about four years ago when we, uh, first got involved in this, uh, project. Uh, we expect twenty thousand dollars, uh, per year or so of maintenance savings because electric motors are much, much simpler and brakes, uh, last much longer. Uh, fuel costs, we were estimating a few years back about three thou- thirty thousand dollars a saving per bus per year. What the TTC has estimated before price increases in diesel is that they expect to save somewhere around sixty thousand per year uh, on diesel costs. Now they run their buses a bit harder than we do here in Ottawa, so, uh, that, that's part of the explanation, but uh, we believe that given the increase in diesel prices, that number is closer to fifty thousand today. So total savings is, uh, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars per bust, uh, up to, uh, over a million over the fifteen year lifetime of the bus. So that's a lot of money that can be reinvested in other stuff, uh, including buying more buses and providing, uh, enhanced services. Um, it was also mentioned by Ms. Amalkar that, uh, ebus prices are expected to, uh, reduce the, uh, current, uh, premium that's paid for e buses is, uh, due to the batteries and battery prices continue to decline over time. And, uh, Bloomberg NEF has projected that, uh, diesel, um, so, uh, sorry, uh, new e buses, including the battery, will be at, uh, price parity with diesel buses by twenty thirty. That's only seven years, uh, in the future. Next slide, please. So, uh, Ottawa is actually a laggard on this file as, has been already discussed. So the good news there is that there are others who've done the tests and the pilots and, uh, the technology has matured. The buses we have are the second generation of the electric buses from New Flyer. Uh, there's no need to reinvent the wheel here. Uh, everybody is going electric. Uh, we need to just do the same thing because it's what makes sense. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so in conclusion, Ottawa has the ability to reduce its corporate emissions by fifty-two percent, which is what the buses contribute. Yes. There is a temporary reliance on some, uh, auxiliary, uh, heating, uh, uh, using diesel. Uh, that problem will go away in time as batteries, uh, get bigger and, uh, allow, uh, electric uh, heat to replace, uh, diesel. Uh, Ottawa could also save a whole bunch of money, so fifty million to, uh, to seventy-five million dollars per year of operational cost by doing what's right for the planet. So if you're a councillor or commissioner who cares about the environment, well, uh, we're going to reduce emissions by quite a bit with this project. And if you care about money, well, we're going to save a whole bunch of money, uh, at the same time. Thank you. And next slide, please, actually. Thanks. So I'm done. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Minard.
Thanks very much, Chair. Thank you for your presentation, uh, Raymond. Uh, I guess my one question is on, um, the procurement of new vehicles and your recommendation around technology. You've previously spoken to commission around technology and the charging, the, the charging infrastructure, gave recommendations. I think, uh, OC transport was in line with what you were recommending, I believe, in the pilot and where we would go in the future. Just, just wondering your, your recommendations around technology in procurement.
Uh, well, so we're, we're technology agnostic, uh, in terms of the charging, uh, mechanisms used for the buses, right? Uh, what we do care about as responsible taxpayers is the cost associated with, uh, that charging infrastructure. So, um, you know, there's, so the question for us is, uh, is, uh, there, there's two possibilities, right? Using the, uh, the solution that's been, uh, adopted by, uh, OC transport, using the pantographs. And there is, uh, the more traditional, uh, plugin system that's available. And, uh, for us, it's really a question of cost. So, um, uh, we think that OC transport should, uh, carefully study the situation and look at what is the, uh, the cheapest alternative. Um, I think they're telling us that pantograph is not any more expensive. Uh, that's not the numbers I've seen, but anyways, um, that, that's the concern we have there. Both solutions, as we saw in the presentation, excellent presentation, by the way, from the, uh, uh, from staff, uh, have the same a hundred fifty kilowatt, uh, capacity. So there's no difference in charging times. Uh, there is a difference in terms of placement, uh, uh, especially in the existing facilities where uh, pantographs have an advantage because they're out of their way, they're on the ceiling, right? Uh, whereas if you're installing floor mounted units with plugs, you have to have space for those and all that. So, so there are some trade offs there. And I expect that OC transport has done, uh, some, some, uh, calculating of that and has, uh, opted for the, uh, the lowest cost solution.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Lowe.
Thank you, Chair, and, uh, thanks for your presentation there, Raymond, uh, and, and Mike. Um, my question's about the end of life for these lithium ion batteries. As you know, each of our e buses have six relatively large, uh, lithium ion batteries and the material in them is ninety-five percent recyclable. However, I do note that, um, right now there aren't many opportunities to do that recycling here, at least locally, um. Perhaps I'm ignorant to there being, there being existing facilities to do that, but, uh, do you foresee that, uh, becoming an issue, especially if the batteries don't last the full life of the bus and we have to replace them at midlife?
Uh, we don't see, we don't see that as being an issue. Actually, there are many uh, recycling plants already in operation. Um, the biggest one is probably Redwood Materials in California that's recycling uh, rejects from, uh, from Tesla production, production lines. Uh, however, there are other projects, one in Kingston in particular, and I'm, I, I can't remember the name off the top here, uh, but they're already recycling batteries in Kingston. So there are local, um, uh, operations that are doing that. Uh, Dofasco in Hamilton was talking about doing that also. Uh, so right now the challenge really for, uh, recyclers to make a business case to recycle, recycle batteries is not the, the, the process and all that. It's more the supply of used batteries. There aren't that many used batteries available for, um, uh, for recycling. So, uh, because batteries are actually lasting longer than we thought. Now for the OC, OC transport batteries in the buses, one possible use would be to, um, once the, the, the batteries don't have enough capacity, uh, to be in a bus that's in service, they still would have enough capacity to serve as storage, onsite storage at the garages where that storage could be used to, uh, as a backup to, um, uh, charge the buses if there's a power failure or, uh, store, uh, perhaps, uh, energy from roof mounted solar on top of the garages during the day while the buses are out on the road. And then use that energy to, uh, charge the buses at night, right? So, so that, that fixed storage, uh, capability of those used batteries uh, is an important thing to consider, given that at some point in the future, OC transport will have a considerable amount of batteries that will be uh, removed from buses. So the buses are more likely to, uh, to, to, um, be end of life themselves. The chassis itself is more likely to be end of life, uh, before the batteries than the batteries. So the, so the batteries will, they will have a lot of value uh, once the, uh, the bus itself is, um, is end of life.
That's excellent information. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Raymond, and thank you, Mike, for joining us as well. Uh, we'll move on to our fifth and final speaker, Angela Keller-Hertzog. Good morning, Angela.
Good morning. Um, thank you very much. Um, this, uh, special, um, meeting was, uh, came, came very fast. So, so perhaps we haven't, um, had a chance to prepare as in depth as we would like. But, uh, thank you very much for seeing public delegations. My name is Angela Keller-Hertzog. I'm the Executive Director of CAFES, which is a community associations for environmental sustainability. And we have a network of, um, uh, people from over fifty community associations, including rural suburban and urban, uh, neighborhoods. Um, I would like to speak in support of the staff recommendations and make some additional recommendations to the Transit Commission so that we can put this special meeting to good use. Um, I would like to first of all note four contextual facts. Uh, firstly, about the procurement. The city of Ottawa auditor took an interest in this file and in these pre-audits um, have scrutinized and improved the procurement approach. And we're very happy about that, especially in light of the, um, uh, difficulties that the city has had in, in procurement of transit. Um, the fact that we're now pairing with the city of Toronto, given that the city of Toronto is ahead of us in its procurement work on bus fleet. Um, and doubling up on their resources seems to us both efficient as well as giving us a higher level of assurance that, um, procurement is being handled correctly and that we're getting good buses that are fit for the job. Secondly, about cost effectiveness, um, it's pretty well known that electric motors Um, it's pretty well known that electric motors require far less maintenance than internal combustion engines. And there are significant operating cost savings from not having to buy the fuel. Um, so I've read that each one of these new buses will have cost savings of about fifty thousand per year. Um, and with the federal grant and loan contributions. Um, I think it's pretty clear that this is a a very sweet deal from just a financial perspective. Um, thirdly, in terms of health, it's clear that these buses will not be belching um, fumes. So the air in our city will be clearer, including for people that are walking or using bikes. Um, in the inner city alongside buses. And fourth, um, as mentioned already about climate action. Um, we have declared a climate emergency, climate change is very real. And this is a climate action that gets us off fossil fuel, so I think it's a low, low hanging fruit. Um, so with this context in mind, I have a few questions and suggestions. Um, there are about nine hundred buses in the current transit fleet. And we are talking about a growing city, as we know from from planning and housing discussions. Um, and we need better transit, more reliable, regular and convenient service, so we will need more buses. And as our neighboring city Kingston has convincingly demonstrated, ridership will increase with better service. So why is the procurement plan for only three hundred and fifty buses? I think the initial discussion was four hundred and fifty. Can we not get perhaps more funds and more support? Um, if we have a larger scale. So I would propose that the Transit Commission task staff with the following four things. Firstly, to remodel the optimal transition of the bus fleet. Do the lifecycle analysis of the existing fleet, including scenarios on different diesel prices. Consider an accelerated electrification. Consider not spending on the refurbishment of diesel infrastructure. And consider also the conversion of the existing buses from diesel into electric. Um, I think, secondly, we should be instructing OC Transport and the City Finance Department. To continue to seek loan and grant opportunities from other levels of government. And make a similar, thirdly, make a similar uh, plan for the para fleet, as has been suggested. And then come back to the Transit Commission in a year from now with this analysis. And you might say, what's the hurry? Well, I remember conversations with Catherine McKenna that was regretting that the City of Ottawa was leaving money on the table. And it might be that in a few years, we will not have a federal government that is willing to subsidize to this degree. So moving faster could mean millions for the overall budget of the City of Ottawa. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Angela, right on time, right on time. Any questions for Angela from commission members? Uh, Commissioner Leeper.
Thanks, Angela, and thanks for um, uh, an excellent presentation and thanks for the support of the staff report. Uh, sorry, you mentioned um, one of the potential areas of freeing up some additional uh, procurement money. Might be through for stalling or not doing refurbishment of the diesel infrastructure. Can uh, can you give me some color on that?
Um, okay, so this is uh, from memory, but having having looked and tried to drill down into city budgets. Um, I I think that. To fully refurbish a diesel bus is a, it can be five hundred thousand to a million. Um, and maybe Rich, I think Richard is still here, maybe he can give us a cost estimate on that. Um, but where there are choices of investing in refurbishment or um, a conversion. Or switching the money to to electric purchases. I think that once we consider the financial, the environmental, the health issues. Um, I think we should analyze that for sure. Because I mean, if you're investing tax dollars in refurbishment in old diesel buses, that's really investing in fossil fuel infrastructure all over again. And locking us in for another, what, ten, fifteen, twenty years?
Yeah, no disagreement, and I'm sorry, I think I mistook um, uh, diesel infrastructure um, as as a. Uh, fueling infrastructure as a uh. So you're not aware of some big capital project to uh, refurbish our fueling infrastructure at uh, the garage or anything like that?
No, I'm not, I'm not aware of something like that.
Infrastructure, you meant, you know, essentially the buses.
Yeah, which, I mean, if we want to use them, they they have to be safe and and operational, right?
Thanks, Chair. Commissioner Menard.
Thank you, Chair. Just uh, very quickly, thanks, Angela, for the presentation. Um, I've noted down some of the pieces which I will ask staff and then see what answers we get. Can you just send me, can you just email me the the presentation points that you mentioned? I think there were four there and I got, I got three down, but I want to make sure I've got them all, so if you could just send those to me.
Yeah, I I will do so. Thanks.
Okay, I'm seeing no more questions, so thanks very much, Angela, for joining us today on on short notice, yes. Appreciate your feedback. Okay, so that brings us to the end of our public delegations. We'll go now to. Questions for staff, and if uh, commissioners can continue to use the raise hand function on Zoom. I know we have some folks in the room and some counselors joining us online as well. Commissioner Leeper, you're first up. Okay, yeah, Commissioner Hill, go ahead, and then we'll go to Council Leeper.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, a great discussion and great presentation. Thank you very much. Uh, certainly a lot of clarity for me in terms of uh, the the depth of the program that we're looking at and the function that we need to serve here. Uh, as the commission, uh, as we look at this uh, this report. Uh, and give it due consideration to uh, to uh, how we're going to proceed in terms of what uh, council requires in order to unlock the funding that's required for you to move forward. Um, uh, I'll boil down a little bit of introduction, uh, and then I'll I'll ask a couple of specific questions. Um, what I've taken from this discussion this morning is really there's four issues that are kind of colliding in time and space with which are creating complexity. The first piece is that we're looking at climate considerations for the city and our obligations from a stewardship of the environment perspective going forward. While at the same time, we're looking at real time bus fleet uh, lifecycle uh, concerns in that we have buses that right now uh, need replacement. We have a reliability uh, of day-to-day operations for our transit system for our public. Uh, and at the same time, we've got a massive financing consideration in terms of what the city's coffers offer. Uh, and what other levels of government are providing. Uh, and all four of those things are coming together to shape where we could or or should go potentially. And I appreciate that uh, certainly from the public delegations and from uh, staff. Uh, we're we're going into a direction that uh, that I can appreciate where we are. Um, I want to start really with uh, kind of the basics here. Uh, I don't know if the staff presentation is available to be to be put up, but I wouldn't mind looking at slide six. I think that's where we talk about uh. Um, the zero emission bus. Um, definitions and such. Okay, so uh, my takeaway from this slide is that um, what was presented to the Transit Commission pre this term. Um. Was that we are looking to. Prioritize options for our replacement fleet based on looking towards lower, lower emission options. Uh, but we're defining which options were or were not viable based on whether or not they were producing emissions. Uh, and what I'm seeing here is that hydro-elect, hybrid electric, compressed natural gas, renewable natural gas buses were not recommended. As they were not zero emission and therefore did not meet the council's policy direction. So that's correct in terms of the reason why those were not uh, sought after as viable alternate of uh, low emission options.
Um, thank you, Chair. Thank you for the question. Um, so that is correct, that that is one of the reasons. There were other considerations as well that were provided for in that report. So um. We are looking to move forward with a program utilizing. Technology that that has been well tested and well used around the world. And that offers uh, multiple manufacturers and suppliers of that technology. One of the challenges with the hybrid electric, the natural gas and renewable, renewable gas alternatives is there's not the same kind of maturity. In the market as there is with electric buses. Electric battery buses are very much in demand across the world. And manufacturers are meeting that challenge. So there, when we do go to procurement, there are, there are several more options available to us, so that is another consideration. Um. On top of the the comment that was provided there that they are not zero emission and they do not meet the council policy direction.
Uh, thank you. So just a follow-up to that, though, um, I think I heard subsequently. Um, that the zero emission bus system that we piloted. Uh, does have an emission component through its diesel uh, supplementary or auxiliary uh, heater. Um, so I guess that's not a, that's not uh, to the level of emissions that would, that would discount it from consideration in that council direction?
That the the buses that we are, that we have currently and that we would potentially. Purchase if they are the same New Flyer buses with the auxiliary diesel heater. They they meet the requirements of the INF C funding and the CIB funding. So they 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 come within that envelope.
So when we're talking about zero emission buses, we're talking about a definition that fits a funding financing opportunity as opposed to. A realistically zero emission transit system. Am I correct in saying that?
Chair, si je, si je peux, je rajouterai peut-être tout simplement pour dire que. Etant donné que c'est un.
Well, I would just add that, given we live in a Nordic climate, a northern climate, we require heating. And there's a small diesel tank so that we can heat the vehicle. When the temperature is below five degrees. That's the only. Diesel component in the electric buses. And this is something that we see across northern countries using electric buses. This is the decision that's been made. To preserve the battery's autonomy or range. Thank you.
I would recommend when we go forward, uh, that we consider uh, kind of the communications up and out in terms of specific programming with the federal government. It's oriented towards uh, funding envelopes and technical programming. Uh, versus uh, the branding of our Ottawa programs, because certainly. Uh, when I look at this program from a City of Ottawa perspective, I see it referred to as the zero emission bus replacement program. And I think we just need to be careful with the way we communicate that, because um, that's not technically the case then, am I correct?
Ils sont considérés officiellement.
Well, they're officially considered to be zero emission buses. But there's a specific uh, factor, uh, that a component that's included for northern countries. To maintain range, we've decided that we have to use a diesel heating. But they are considered as zero emission buses across the world. That's the definition we're using, and it's used across the world.
Uh, and I just want to confirm just from uh, the perspective of. The overall transit ridership capacity that we're going to get as we move through this process. Um, I note that, you know, twenty twenty-five, uh, we see us, we see a decline in the total number of vehicles. And I also note that the electric vehicle uh, requirements. Uh, sees this being, I think it's forty passengers or thereabout, but it's less than certainly the articulated buses or the double decker buses that we have. Uh, so we're going to see a reduction in overall ridership capacity. Am I correct in interpreting that as such? And do we, do we know what that will look like? Uh, in terms of uh, of lost seats uh, on on our transit system?
Uh, thank you, Chair, for the question. Uh. That this slide is indicative. It was used in the twenty twenty-one presentation as the plan moving forward. We will come back with a more accurate slide that represents the plan. Uh, at future Transit Commission meetings. But to 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 kind of expand on the discussion about capacity, the the buses that we are. Looking to move forward with initially, the first tranche of the twenty-six buses are forty-foot buses. And so in our engagement with the, with TTC, their procurement is for forty-foot buses. We will review. The the current situation and the optimization of routes and the and the demand for transit. Throughout this year and next year and every year, and we will make decisions in the future about how many more forty-foot buses to buy. And how many more potentially sixty-foot articulated buses to buy and potentially double-decker buses. We're we're not at that point now, at this point in the program with what we are aware of. We want to move forward with just the twenty-six forty-foot buses.
Chair, if I may. I would like to ask, maybe Pat is in charge of the planning, so can you just uh. Complete the explanation, please?
Merci. Uh, Mr. Chair, the the. Quantity of bus reduction that's shown there in twenty twenty-five is related to the opening of the O-Train extensions to the east and to the west, both of which will replace. Large parts of the bus network. Uh, it's not that uh, total fleet size reduction that you see on that page is not related to the energy source of the propulsion. Now, as Richard said earlier, that chart. Um, is from uh, was prepared. Earlier and uh, so lessons of the pandemic and current rider, current and future ridership and the next. Uh, long-range financial plan for transit will all have a, and a. Um, and influence on uh, the long-term fleet plan that we recommend to council in future. Um, capital budgets.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of other questions, but I'm happy to uh, to let.
Yeah, go ahead, uh, Counselor Hill.
Um, uh, on slide uh, twenty-one, uh, there's some, there's some information there with regard to the pilot report, and I just wanted to. I guess drill a little bit into um, some of the specifics, if we could go to slide twenty-one, I think it is. I I guess I'll just, is there a, is there actually a hard report that is available that gives the the data? And the the trends and outcomes from the actual pilot that is available?
Uh, thank you, Chair, for the question. I I will ask my colleague Dan to uh, provide a response to that, please.
Hi, Dan Villeneuve, uh, Program Manager overseeing the Zero Mission Bus Program. Uh, so the question is if there's a report that talks about the um. Can you repeat the question again, sorry?
I apologize, I I have, I came from a federal uh, job before this where I was involved in some procurement and such, and I, and I just, I wanted to follow up on the function. Of the pilot in that my experience would be if we're going to run an R and D type program or a pilot program designed to get data and outputs. That that there there would be a program with which we would be able to see that, and I know we've gotten good data this morning in verbally and by slides. But I would think that there's some kind of a technical report or an actual uh, document that 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 denotes specifically. Uh, what the outcomes were from this pilot project, and I would say, I believe Toronto has done the same. Uh, in their, in their pilot programming, and so I just, I wanted to confirm if we've done that so that we could take a look at that data. Yeah, so we we've gathered the data, we've run the buses uh, in different climate temperatures throughout the City of Ottawa. We've partnered up with the NRC uh, for water containers, uh, and we've ran the buses uh. On different routes uh, to gather that range uh, and performance. Uh, there is not a report at this point, and we've committed to bring that data back to the next Transit Commission or even, I believe, the March Transit uh, Commission. So so just to to follow up that as an example of what I would be interested in. Um, I would like to look at at the beat route of one of those uh, hybrid vehicles that were on the pilot. You know, on a given day, uh, did it start in, you know, seventy-five route out at Marketplace? It went downtown, then it went and got charged, and then it went out to Orleans and did a run. Total kilometers for the day were X. Uh, you know, total battery at the end of day was Y. Um, and then a comparable to what would that similar sister route have been if it was a diesel or if it was uh, whatever the other system? Uh, just to provide that comparable, uh, so that's the reason I asked the question, uh. I'm interested in the confirm, the the mean, uh, could you maybe go back one slide? There was a mean maintenance slide of, I think, twelve thousand right there. I I don't understand why we set uh, the benchmark there at twelve thousand. I believe Toronto's. uh the benchmark there at twelve thousand. I believe Toronto's um requirement, hard requirement for their E bus replacement or their, their, their procurement program was thirty thousand. Uh, and then in the process of their pilot, they actually, uh, the, the program went above that uh based on the, the conditions that they were running it in. So I'm, I am concerned to see that the actual pilot that we ran uh saw the average mean distance failure at just over twelve thousand. Uh, when I believe the same uh reporting in Toronto has it, has it substantially above thirty thousand. Uh, so I just wanted to, I guess that's perhaps an inquiry. I don't know if you have the answer on the top of your head, but I would be very interested in that, that difference in numbers.
Okay, thank you, Chair, for the observation. Um, we, we deliberately used a comparison with, with the data that we have from Ottawa so that we're able to compare like with like. So it is a industry standard measure of reliability. Um, but you have to take into account the different types of fleets, the different length of time for the, for the um for, for a pilot phase, for instance, Toronto had a bigger pilot program over a longer period with more ex extensive data. We have, we have data from twelve months for four buses. So it's, it's challenging to, to be um to, to, to take comparisons from the city of Ottawa to, to other locations, especially on, on a pilot basis. So we've, we've brought back the information to indicate that compared to our, our existing fleets, um, the, the E bus is performing well.
Thank you. Um, in terms of safety uh and reliability, um, certainly I'm concerned with any new technology we bring on that it, uh, that it will meet the, the basic measures that we have. Uh, what I've seen to date is that there is a belief that we are in that space. This is a safe technology. But I have seen, uh, and there were reports in the last year of several different cities. I believe Paris and northeastern U S, I think it was in Connecticut, where there were spontaneous combustion uh fires with some of these types of vehicles. And I just wanted to confirm that we've, we've cross referenced those safety related incidents and we understand that uh there's not a significant potential issue that we could foresee with this battery system on these electric buses.
Mister Mayor, we're doing uh benchmarking with the other cities e- effectively and maybe I would, I would ask Dan Vilnov to comment those incidents. And I, I have my chief safety officer online as well. I will invite him after to, to comment.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor, for the question. Uh, so we are uh working with the bus manufacturers to understand what's uh happening uh in the other cities. Plus, on top of that, we are working as we are moving forward with the program, we're looking at every opportunity to uh increase potential safety items within our facilities. And that's why, Richard, I mentioned earlier, uh, increasing our sprinkler systems and so on. However, there's no evidence at this point that there is any concerns with our buses. And when any incidents have happened, we do work with our partners in Montreal, Toronto and so on to uh collaborate on uh what the trend is within the industry.
Uh, thank, thank you, Chair. Maybe just to supplement the answer from my colleagues. Um, that there are several different types of battery technologies that are in use by agencies around the world. The battery technology that was um involved in the fire in France is a different type of lithium battery compared to the battery that we are utilizing uh on our pilot program. And the, and different to the type that we are expecting to be purchasing, purchasing as part of our fleet moving forward.
We, we do have the chief safety officer here as well, Paul Trebatat. Not sure if Paul, you have anything to add to the answers?
Uh, thanks very much, Chair. Um, within our safety management system at OC Transpo, uh, the second pillar in that system involves um risk management. And so uh with the objective of the safety management system to continuously uh seek opportunities for reducing or eliminating harm. Risk management plays a very important role whenever we have a change to uh equipment, change to a process, uh, change in operations. And we, uh, we have a risk management methodology that we use. And uh my folks, I have a safety, electrical safety engineer who is working with Dan Vilnov's program. And uh together we are evaluating uh potential hazards that we foresee potentially being involved in this type of uh of change to facilities and to equipment. And uh we are doing our best to, to evaluate those hazards and look for opportunities in the early design phase for mitigations to substantially reduce or eliminate those hazards.
Uh, thank you, if you will, Chair. One last question, then on slide uh twenty seven. Uh, it speaks to the timeline and, and just very generally, I think I heard it in uh uh sprinkled throughout uh the discussion, but I want to confirm we, we have an off ramp in the future. And I just want to make sure that it's baked into any decision that goes forward that should we find ourselves in a situation where uh there is an unsatisfactory operational performance issue or we're concerned that we are not uh, you know, over the next, you know, week or so of decisions committing ourselves down the road of the next decade of throwing more good money after bad if we determine that it is bad. Obviously, we want to go forward on this program identifying that we've hit the milestones and we're going to move into onramps. We want to do more uh advantageous, uh, taking advantage of good programming. But if we get ourselves in the situation where we find that, you know what, this specific perch, uh, procurement uh mechanism or this specific supplier is not meeting the mail, that we have the ability to off ramp and move to something different and we have a plan B. And I ask the question because I feel that right now we're going through this process. Uh, there really is no plan B because we're trying to do uh many things at once to uh to get, to go forward. So I just want to make sure going forward in a year or two from now, uh, when we come back to look at the progress that we've made on this program, uh, that we have the ability at that time to say, okay, maybe there's some issues and this is how we want to adjust.
Chair, yes, the answer is yes, and we commit to come here at the Transit Commission to uh make follow up with the councillors to make sure that you uh are supportive of our actions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor. I'm just gonna call everyone councillor and commissioner and member and everything's too confusing, so councillor Leaper.
Merci. Um, alors, j'ai juste quelques questions.
Well, I have a couple of questions. Yeah, uh, on the current uh uh electric bus generations, there's auxiliary heater, right? I think I heard a more talk about a replacement for that generator, right? When battery technology will have advanced sufficiently, when we have a new generation of batteries, is that right? Did I hear correctly? I'd like to ask Dan Vina for, because I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understood the question. Dan, did you understand? Yes, I did. While we're looking at the industry to see whether battery capacity will increase and whether we will have the, the opportunity to increase capacity for the required distances or required range. And we're looking to see whether we can actually remove this heater and if that's possible, with something we will do. Is there something that could happen the next few years or is it far away? Well, it really depends on the technology and the advancement of uh battery technology. So we don't have any guarantees at this current juncture, right? No, no guarantees. This will be possible for the next tranche of uh buses will have to have that diesel heater. All right, thank you.
Distance between the, uh, the failures. Are there any other K P I's that you're tracking with respect to those failures? Um, when a bus fails, uh, an electric bus fails, does it take longer to repair? Is it shorter to repair? Um, what other metrics are you looking at and how are the buses performing?
Uh, thank you for the question, Chair. Uh, in, in terms of the uh reliability of the, the four new flyer buses that have been operating under the pilot, um, there have been issues not with the electrical supply system, but more mechanically. And so New Flyer is working with us on a redesign of the suspension system for the bus. Um, and that is, that learning exercise is being moved into our procurement for any future buses. So the experience that we've had is that the, the, the uh reliability issues that we have experienced are related to the mechanical systems on the bus and not with the electrical charging system.
The, what are the implications, though, of those mechanical failures? Are, are they just as easy to repair for your techs in the shop? Or is it more difficult to repair? Are the buses, are the buses offline longer when they fail?
Uh, with the example that I'm discussing now, this particular um issue with the design of the suspension system, then it, it does not matter whether it's an electric bus or whether it's a diesel bus, it still takes the same amount of time to repair. And that's partly because of the location. But there, there could be situations where um we have to utilize our train staff who are trained to work on an electric bus because the safety considerations are quite different working on an electric bus compared to a diesel bus. And so there, there are situations where there, there would be a different way of addressing um mechanical, mechanical issues and maintenance issues.
The yeah, so I I guess I'm, I'm concerned that we don't have stats in front of us that say the, the, the buses fail less often. Uh, but when they do fail, uh, I'd be interested to know, you know, is, is that repair time similar? Uh, is that repair time longer? Is that repair time less?
Thank you, Chair, for the question.
Chair, if you may, I have uh Jim Greer, he's on the call, so he's in charge of the maintenance, so maybe he can comment.
Thanks.
Chair, I will find, I will try to find him, so may, may we switch.
Just uh one moment, we'll be able to bring him in.
Hello? How, how are you, councillor? So, yes, uh, apologize, I was just invited in as a panelist here, so I was, I was sitting as an attendee. Uh, the, uh, as far as the bus uh downtime on the units, uh, Richard is correct. Uh, most of the time, uh, for the last year, we've been steering the buses and the maintenance of the buses to our train staff that have been there. So uh the, the, the problems of mechanical failures that we've been seeing have been turned around rather quickly, consistent with the diesel buses that we have. Uh, we see these buses are new, so we're not seeing many defects. It's like a vehicle while it's under warranty, the, the vehicles are, are being reliable. Uh, but as far as the turnaround time in the garage, they've been, the guys have been doing a great job at getting them back into service and they've been running uh average kilometers comparable to a diesel bus. So I, I don't believe once our staff is completely trained up and familiar and all the safety aspects are completely uh followed, that the downtime should be consistent with what we're seeing now.
Okay, okay, that's uh, that's comforting. Um, I know my colleagues have lots of other questions, so I'll leave it there. Thanks.
Councillor De Rush.
Uh, thanks, Chair, and, and um thank you to Chair, you Chair and the staff for going through the contortions to, to organize this meeting. Um, that I think is important to, to have an opportunity to hear from delegations and uh give some opportunity to public to react between what we do today and the council meeting. So thank you for doing that. I just, you know, I appreciate that we're, we're, this is about the acquisition of the, of the fleet. But part of that is also the um the infrastructure that's needed to support that. Uh, and when we talk about climate change, um, you know, part of the strategy is to to adapt and to mitigate. And we know from the recent N C C report that, you know, we can expect likely warmer temperatures, more rain, more freezing rain. And I think there's a concern with residents that, you know, how reliable will our electricity grid be? And if there are significant outage, how will that affect, you know, our first infrastructure so that the uh the transit fleet is not, not grounded? So I guess that's my first question is, um, you know, what, what, how, how do we sort of respond to potentially you know, situations where, you know, there may be more outages in the grid as much as we don't want that?
Uh, thank you, Chair, for the question. The, the infrastructure work which is being undertaken uh in conjunction with Hydro Waterway at our facility will include um redundancy to the electrical supply system. So we will have um dual transformers on site that will have two feeds. That, that deals with an outage on one of those feeds that could be climate created. It could be also created by an accident. That, that, that deals with a, a more localized event. Um, in the situation where there's a more catastrophic weather event um that impacts the whole of the east end of the city, then we do have uh gas-fired generators on site that will be able to provide charging for our buses, even though the rest of the east end will have no power.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I think, you know, I, I'm, I'm willing to accept that as a first step. And again, this is a long-term project, but I, I really think we need to look you know, at Gatineau and maybe like if, if this was fossil fuel and we, there was an outage for whatever reason, we, we'd be turning to our partners across the river. And I don't see why, you know, that can't be pursued potentially as well if they begin to adopt an electric fleet as well on the Gatineau side. And uh, in fact, it, it may be cheaper, right? And I, I appreciate there'd be all kinds, I'm sure, regulatory and, and probably interprovincial trade barriers to do that. But that's probably one of the competitive advantages that we have right now, ironically, is that they're on a different system that if we're out there, they're up and running. So that, maybe that's something long-term to consider. Um, and just as a comment too, I think, you know, the model's changing. I think if we go in this direction and the Toronto transit system goes in a direction, um, you know, we, 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 we're gonna have a different model, I think, for funding. We have to look at a different model for funding for transit. So the gas tax that we pay now for our diesel, we get back in terms of gas taxes. Um, so there's some financial advantage to us. And I think the province should be looking at for the electricity that we purchase for these, that uh we have a similar arrangement. And maybe that's something for A M O to consider um as we go forward. So again, I think as we switch to fossil fuels, some of the arrangements we have, I think, need to be replicated um at the provincial level in terms of trying to lower the cost. And I appreciate that we're, we do get revenue from, uh, from the dividend. But uh, again, I think the model will change overall. We've got time to, uh, to do that. So again, thank you again for this opportunity to hear the uh the presentation, the questions. That's all, Chair.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Councillor Lowe.
All right, thank you, Chair. Sorry, councillor Menard, if I uh but, but, butted you by any chance. So there's no arguing that federal funding will, uh, and, and loans will help us meet our emissions targets quicker than if we tackled it alone. But I cannot support the staff recommendation. We're, we're in a timeline that's practically parallel to the city's decision to purchase hybrid buses in the late two thousands. At that time, hybrid electric propulsion technology for larger vehicles like city buses was still in its infancy. The promise of fuel and therefore cost savings of up to thirty six percent sold the city council of the day to approve the purchase of a hundred seventy seven hybrid buses. Those savings were never realized and the buses were ultimately retired at ten to twelve years old in twenty twenty. For context, our oldest diesel buses right now are about nineteen years old, while our older batch of articulated buses is pushing sixteen. So before us is a funding and a loan, um, is funding and a loan, I should say, from the federal government to help accelerate our electrification plans. Among the conditions is that the city must achieve sufficient mileage each year based on an assumption. That assumption, fifty five thousand kilometers, is based on our current bus network, which has yet to adapt to travel patterns that changed almost three years ago and does not factor in major network changes likely coming with each section of stage two entering service. The repayment model assumes a fifteen-year lifespan of the E buses. If the technology does not live up to projections, even though repayment plus interest will be waived, the cost of replacing those vehicles, service issues that will arise and the further erosion of public trust is not a cost, I uh, is not a cost I'm willing to load onto municipal finances. If successful, operational savings in fuel and maintenance that could be reinvested in the transit system would instead be diverted to loan repayment until the amount plus interest is paid. Going back to the hybrids, that technology has evolved continuously since the late two thousands. Hybrid electric propulsion systems now include new options like engine Hybrid electric propulsion systems now include new options like engine shut-offs, as new T T C's newest hybrids have, to further improve performance and reduce emissions. Our friends at the T T C and Mississauga Transit opted to use hybrid electric buses as transition technologies. Their newest hybrids come with the ability to be converted to battery electric at their midlife refurbishment. Combined, they are purchasing almost five hundred hybrid electric buses over the next two years. I'm not trying to peddle hybrids, it's the only comparison we really have. Uh my point is, we bought into new technology in the past, that technology has evolved. We need to let battery electric buses evolve, including the end-of-life considerations, so we can justify spending money to replace the fleet. To the credit of our e-buses, the pilot is going well, and in some cases exceeding manufacturer expectations. But remember, they are just over a year old, and our test fleet of four buses is not enough to truly simulate managing a larger fleet from an operations and maintenance data collection standpoint. Ultimately, this will be a nearly billion-dollar program, and even though the federal government is fronting this, it's sixty-five percent of the price tag. There is just one taxpayer and a failed program will cost residents regardless of the funding source. One winter in service with a fleet of four is not enough data to meaningfully base a decision with such heavy financial implications upon. Given the scale and magnitude of variables that can affect vehicle performance, I'm weary of relying on a loan to purchase them. I feel loans are better used to fund static assets like charging infrastructure facilities, not depreciating mobile assets. The L R T, uh Public Inquiry Reports overarching theme is the public interest, and even though advancing our environmental goals is in the public interest, it must be balanced with responsible stewardship of public funds, even our auditor general has has advised that caution. This isn't, the loan isn't our only option. There will be future opportunities in the future to purchase e-buses if the technology succeeds. Not to mention zero emissions bus fund is available until March twenty twenty six. For example, if several transit agencies in Ontario determine e-buses are the way forward, Metro Links will likely add that option to their joint procurement initiative. Or we can adopt our own steady-state procurement to take advantage of incremental advantages advances in technology, like increases the battery capacity or the ability to replace the auxiliary diesel diesel heater. I understand new technologies ultimately need buy-in to be able to improve and evolve, but the loan is too great a risk at a time when the city should be more financially risk averse. And given that, I do have some questions on behalf of councillor Dudas uh for staff. Uh will O C Transport ensure uh the guarantee of simultaneous delivery of charging infrastructure in vehicles or ensure the infrastructure is in place before the vehicles arrive um to prevent a situation where newly vehicle newly delivered vehicles um aren't even able to undergo a T N C uh testing commission and are unable to be used because of the lack of infrastructure?
Uh thank you, Chair, for the question. The the intent and the plan moving forward is that the infrastructure will be in place. Uh tested and commissioned prior to the arrival of the the first few buses of that twenty-six tranche.
Thank you. And second question is, have the e-buses been effectively tested to meet the demands of Ottawa's transit passengers and needs? In other words, do the buses have any restrictions and or issues that we should be aware of, like uh let's say the double-deck height restrictions, things like that?
None, no restrictions.
Okay, and last question on behalf of councillor Dudas is, on the topic of asset risk management, given the complexities in fighting electrical fires, has O C Transport consulted with O F S with any plans, best practices, et cetera?
Once we get the green light to move forward with the program, then we will be working with with our partners, including O F S. We will have a fire and life safety working group that will look at many of the aspects uh associated with uh expanding the electric bus program, including the facility upgrades, uh sprinkler systems, uh training that's required for emergency service staff, training that's required for our own staff, so we will be building a big program uh once we get the green light to go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Menard.
Thanks very much, uh Chair, and thank you for the presentation. It was a very comprehensive presentation. I'm glad we we're getting a chance to meet today and and have these questions, uh because I think the presentation um answered a lot of questions in itself, so thank you for that uh with staff. Uh to your knowledge, with any other purchase of of buses, we've we've tried different technology, of course, in the past, but with any other purchase of buses, have have they undergone uh the scrutiny of a of uh the audits that have been taking place pre-purchase for us of of these buses? Have the same thing happened for other purchases of um you know, say, the sixty-foot, uh you know, all the different buses that you had laid out? Has that happened before?
Uh thank you for the question. Uh I'll defer that question to my colleague Dan Fieldne, who has some experience in the previous purchases.
Thank you, Chair, for the question. Uh in previous procurement, we have not had the involvement of the auditor general.
Okay, thank you very much for that. In terms of technology, um my understanding and looking at other countries and whether this is this is ready for cold climate that that in Norway, in China, in many cities across Canada now, the technology's been tested, has worked well. Cold climate has been, um you know, they've adjusted over time. Uh I might understand the world is adopting this. Ottawa, though we have a pilot project, would not be a new adopter of this technology. Is that correct?
Uh thank you for the question. My characterization would be the same, that we are not the new adopter. Uh we saw the list of other cities that are utilizing electric buses, the example of Moscow. They've they've have a thousand electric buses, they've gone through five winters, they're reporting no interruptions with their service. Um and they they are committed to going full electric, as are several other cities, including Toronto and Edmonton, Chicago. The commitment from these larger cities is that they will be fully battery electric by twenty forty.
Great, thank you very much for that. On the plan for the procurement in conjunction with uh the T T C, I'm just wondering if this is approved by by committee and council, which I I hope that it is. Um can you just walk me through the process? Um how that would work in terms of working with T T C and the timing? Um and the type of procurement we'd be looking to do. So we have a certain type of bus now that we've been piloting. Would would that type of experience be included in in that procurement? Uh would we set up specifications based on what we've learned from from that uh with T T C together? Maybe you could just shed more light on how that process might work for for procurement.
Thank you, Chair, for the for the question. Alvin Neve will answer to that one.
Thank you, Chair, for the question. Uh yes, we have uh the T T C procurement, it's a collaborative procurement that they've done uh with other transit agencies in Ontario. Uh so what they've done is um brought different transit agencies to gather their experience, their specification. Uh within their procurement, they have an adoption clause, so once uh the procurement is awarded, we will have the opportunity to adopt into that procurement, and then we will work directly with the bus manufacturer. So we will be a contract within uh with the city of Ottawa and the bus manufacturer, T T C's not involved at that point. However, the base specs and the commercial requirements from that procurement uh is the base of our um procurement that we'll be doing. Plus, we will be ensuring that all of the O C Transport City of Ottawa specific requirements are added within uh that purchase.
Okay, excellent. Thanks so much for that, that level of detail. Um just on just the question around, um we had the C N I B delegation. Um will the A V A S be required as part of that future procurement? It's the federal regulation that's come into place recently um in terms of uh the vehicle sound?
Yes, that's correct. That equipment is currently on our current buses and will be a standard requirement for all future buses that we procure.
Okay, thank you for that. Just on another delegation's questions around, there are four items there. Uh the main ones were around um continuing to seek loan and grant opportunities and a similar um well, I'll go on to that in a second, but we I assume that you don't need further direction or emotion to continue to 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 look for loan and grant opportunities as this program evolves. Is that correct? You had that direction already?
That's correct. We're already doing that.
Okay, fantastic. And then in terms of um the optimal transition of the bus fleet, um and uh you know, um when end of life will occur for the other buses that we have in fleet now, I assume we are also obviously looking at timeline there and trying to line up new procurement models with with our needs. Now, those needs may be debated, but how many buses we have on the road and the service that can be expected. Um but how would, how do you anticipate those needs in the in the optimal transition of the bus fleet? Um in terms of level of service, and I know this may be a pat scrimter question, how do you how do you anticipate what the needs are for the city and what we may require in the future, given current service levels?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. So the the graph that you saw on the screen and that was in the the uh twenty twenty-one report showed how the transition could occur with the normal lifecycle, the normal end-of-life of the existing diesel-powered buses, so that the the uh battery electric buses or any other zero emission bus could come in as those buses are required, as as the previous buses and their economic life, therefore putting no additional uh risk nor cost on the city, just normal uh lifecycle replacement. Separately from the technology choice, separately from the energy source, we uh always have to uh keep our our fleet plan and our the entire capital uh program up to date, looking forward with whatever things are changing. What you saw in those charts there, where they um increase in the, sorry, the decrease in the number of buses that we are going to require once the long extensions of the O train open to the east and to the west over the next few years. Uh but there are other influences as well. There will be the policy decisions of council on uh what service levels will be. There will be the the ridership uh recovery as the um as whether people return back to onsite work, there will be other policy decisions taken by council about uh how to design the transit network. There will be influences from all over the place. If there's a, uh you know, uh we we've seen in the past, economic booms that have come up very quickly have required all city services to respond. Uh and and we've done that, and we would do that again. Uh the there's, we'll we will continuously update our forecasts of what the future could be based on our, all of our knowledge up to the current time, uh but none of that predicts what's actually gonna happen the next week or the next two years.
Okay, thank you for that. Um appreciate that. On the uh the procurement of uh new para-fleet vehicles, um I did have a, you know, informal discussions about piloting um smaller electric vehicles for the para-fleet. Um i- is that something you're reviewing now? Do you need direction to review it? Would that be part of your normal course to look into those options as well for that for that fleet replacement?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair, for the question. My understanding is that the that O C Transport is moving forward, looking at those options for the replacement of the para-transpo fleet with um with with an electric battery option. So I don't believe we need further direction. I'll just confirm with my colleague Dan that that's the case.
Yeah, thanks for the question. Uh the current plan, uh the pair of buses are reaching end of life. We will be looking at replacing them. And as part of that uh replacement, uh looking at what the options are for uh zero emission pair of vehicles.
Yeah, thank you. I know the market options are, I guess I'll say, less available on on that side um than the the larger buses, but just really appreciate you you looking into that. I think I've uh tried to capture most of the delegates that I wanted to highlight here and just really appreciate the the presentation and all the work you've put in. I don't think we've done more risk management on another purchase of buses than we've done on this one. We've done a lot of risk management. I know O C Transport was doing that before the audits as well. So the risk management on this, I think, has been pretty fantastic, and that only comes because there's good questions around the table about how we manage our risk, right? So appreciate everyone's dialogue here. Thanks.
Could I just have a quick follow-up question on the para-transpo? This decision to to move forward on electric buses, it's not at the expense of the para-transpo fleet, like this is not delaying any planned purchases or anything?
We don't need a motion to go forward because that's part of the electrification strategy, so we're already looking at that. The councillor is right, the 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 technology is not quite right now, and it's not available. So we're working to see if we couldn't have a pilot bus at least uh for a para-transpo, this this way we could try it. It'd be very important to to try it out because the service given with by para-transpo is different. Uh when you go with the bus in the morning, you don't necessarily know what route you will take to go from A to B. It's not as regular as the big buses. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh thank you very much for all the presentations and all the answers. And I, on that last point, I fully agree with councillor Menard. That would be a a good uh next step. Um I'm uh supportive of this motion, and I my main question will just be specifically on this motion, but I did wanna make a few comments. Some of the comfort in being able to support this comes from being on last council, and I wasn't even on the full council, but the last year on Transit Commission. Um I really benefited from a lot of the presentations there, and and I know others didn't, so I'm really glad that we have today for for that to take place. Um I also went for a ride on the bus when we had that day and uh was able to ask a number of questions there about the charging. Uh how it works and how good it is and how long the batteries last, so you know, I benefited from that as well. Um I'm really pleased with the pilot project and the cooperation with the Toronto Transit Commission, and I like that we will be following the Toronto Transit Commission procurement model potentially and working with them further on that. I like that there were other options looked at, and maybe those technologies will evolve, you know, this wouldn't maybe be electric buses for the next four hundred years. Technologies will evolve, um but I like that there were other options looked at right now. Um I, one of the things I do really wanna emphasize is, as a Hydro Ottawa board member, it is critical that uh we appreciate the benefits of that partnership. Because if you don't know, and maybe you all do know, we are one hundred percent shareholder of hard of Hydro Ottawa, right? And so we own Hydro Ottawa, we then will be partners with Hydro Ottawa in this venture. The uh ongoing benefits of that aren't really thought through in this motion because we just know that this will be a great benefit. But it will be as we go on and continue to work with Hydro Ottawa, because we eventually get that um uh dividend uh of twenty million at least every year and what that can go towards. So maybe it will be more than twenty million. It often is, maybe it'll be even more than what we're used to. So I would really wanna emphasize that is a key part of this. Um I, you know, a personal note, I had a hybrid vehicle in two thousand and four uh and uh just got rid of it in twenty nineteen when I went to fully electric, so this speaks to me on a personal level, and I can tell you the savings are hard to believe. And if Russia has as much oil as they have and they're going to electric buses, I think that's a little bit of a signal. Anyway, funny joke. Okay, the actual motion. So the first part of the motion, just simply draw down, I think that's easy. Second, the movement from one budget over to a clear budget for the Z E B program budget, fine. Uh the third part of the motion is planning for next and future budgets, clear. The last one, I guess I have a question on, and maybe it's for Wendy or Isabel, I'm not sure. I honestly cannot believe this. I was just saying to councillor Tierney, I cannot believe that if we do not get the savings, we don't have to pay it back. To me, that is just unbelievable. As somebody said, I think it could be the sweetest deal in town. But I do wanna ask about the due diligence we expect on that. You know, I mean, we could just simply say, oh, hey, we didn't get those savings, we can't pay this back. But what do we expect that to look like from the uh Infrastructure Bank?
So we went through a rigorous process to identify the baseline. So we owned up to the G H G numbers because we looked at ten years' history of G H G costs for maintenance and fuel. And it's I uh C I B that is owning the risk on the Z E B maintenance and energy costs, our energy efficiency, and the useful life of the buses too. So I heard earlier about the fifteen years. If we don't reach the fifteen years, they're taking the risk on that too. Um we have to take commercially reasonable efforts to achieve those savings. So they will hold our feet to the fire to make sure that we are doing everything possible to achieve those savings, absolutely.
Wow, that that'll be an interesting process, and my follow-up would be, would we uh get reports on that? Because I think looking at those savings would be benefit even to the Environment Committee. There's there's a number of things I think that kind of data might help uh inform us about.
Uh I can confirm that we will be establishing a system over the next year. Before we do our first drawdown, uh we are building a system to track all the metrics, so that we, it's a very complicated credit agreement, one of the most complicated ones we've worked on. A lot of metrics that we have to capture and monitor and report on, and we will be setting up the system to do that.
Great, well, thank you very much. I think this is very exciting and transformational, and uh I think this time different differently transformational from the L R D, I hope in every way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Tierney.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I I echo my colleagues' compliments of your presentation. It was really thorough, and I learned even more today than when we originally were talking about this. Uh most of the questions have been asked. I just had one question. I think I asked this. Most of the questions have been asked. I just had one question. I think I asked this in the past. You know, diesel buses run out of gas or fuel on occasion too. What happens in the case with the electric bus? If it runs out of power, is there like a supply wagon with a generator that charges it up or they have to tow it back? And part two of that is, out of the four vehicles we have now, has that actually occurred? I know that would be part of training to ensure that the operator knows, okay, you're getting low, time to go home. But I just, I'm kind of curious, when you have four buses versus hundreds of buses, what that would look, would look like overall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the question. I'm going to defer that question to Dan, who's been intimately engaged day by day on the pilot program.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Chair. Yes, we've been tracking these buses over the past year. We have not had the, we didn't run out of energy out on the street. There are warnings on the bus that will let the operator know when it reaches fifteen percent and then ten percent and then that five percent and so on. So we never ran out of electricity or battery capacity on the bus at this point. However, like any other bus, if there is a failure out on the street, we have, you know, it will be coming back to our maintenance facility via tow truck.
Okay, so I think, do we tow diesels as well?
Yes, we tow all vehicles that we have have are have been told.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Carr.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation today.
There was a calculation, first of all, of the cost that's gone into this and what the cost would be to develop an alternative with this, not to go forward. And also if you could outline the next steps that would happen if all commissioners decided not to vote in support of this.
The biggest issue for us, if this is not adopted today, it's the impossibility of delivering a service. When the decision was made to go through this transformation, we did the work we had to do. And if we have to look at an alternative, a new technology, we saw it with the examples we gave, the technologies that are available are not recommended by my team. So that would mean that we'd have to do more essays, more trials. We have to put a lot, invest a lot of money in the old diesel buses. We wouldn't be certain of of their reliability after fifteen years. So the service delivery would be greatly affected. And I think we owe our users at least a reasonable service. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for having this meeting. I really think it's been very valuable. I really appreciated the presentation. That was very thorough and and it was a great opportunity to to learn more. I also appreciate the delegations. And I want to thank the CNIB for coming out. I think that that's really important. And I would like to, and I apologize, this may have been dealt with. I had to, I had to step out, so apologies if it has. But what is being done in terms of our our ridership that is sight impaired for these buses?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Chair, but I'm I'm not quite sure of the question. Could you please repeat?
Yes, we heard from the CNIB and their concern. I mean, it's kind of ironic that, you know, quietness is a is a problem, but if they can't hear buses coming, if if there's no signals to them of arrival, et cetera, I, are we working with the CNIB to resolve these issues?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for repeating. So we have been working with CNIB as one of the key stakeholders in the development of this pilot program and also moving forward. The existing pilot buses do have the AVAS system. So that's the Acoustic Vehicle Alerting System. And as part of the specifications for the the new electric buses, that system is also included in the specifications.
Thank you. What about the kneeling bus, the the ability to bring chairs on? Is that, that's part of it? Of the bus service too?
That that will be part of the specifications as well.
Okay, thank you. No, I I know a lot of people are concerned out there because they think such a large buy. The the big concern is because we're doing it all at once that somehow the technology will get will get dated by the time we replace all our buses. And I just want to make sure that we we offer good information to the public because this is, this is their money that we're using to assure them that this is not going to get dated. I mean, things change every year. You know, the electric cars get better and better, the batteries get better and better. What is, what kind of communications program do we have to discuss that, to show that it's a good value right now?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Chair. The the purchase of the buses will take place in a phased approach. So the first set of buses is the twenty-six tranche that would arrive in twenty twenty-four. There will be further discussions with TTC, sorry, with Transit Commission about the the following fleet of buses that we would purchase. It is possible that the technology on that second fleet may be slightly different to the first fleet. As as the manufacturers try to keep ahead of the changes that take place. But that's, that will be determined at the time that we make the purchase.
Okay. Yeah, no, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions from councillors? I have a few, but. Okay, well, first, there's just a thought about about risk. We have talked a lot about risk of the new technology. The the diesel buses are not without risk. Actually, I think Ms. Jasmine mentioned the cost of diesel. I looked up here in twenty twenty, on this date in twenty twenty, diesel is at a hundred and twenty seven point three cents per liter. And today it's a hundred ninety-five point three cents per liter. So that's a big increase and a big risk keeping with diesel. Madame Emma Carr mentioned that diesel buses may not be manufactured for that longer. So that's a potential risk. And the other one, we don't have Ottawa Public Health here either, but there is a significant health risk from buses that that emit dangerous greenhouse gases. So, but I want to ask a few questions. One was about the transition cost. Since twenty twenty-one, that seems to be the biggest change in the original estimates we had in front of commission and council. And I know it's related to the new garage and structural reinforcements and sprinklers. Can you just, at what point did that become apparent or were there any other options explored that that could have brought down that cost? What, why is this additional infrastructure required at this point?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Chair. As with any large program, we we start off at the outset with the best figures that we have from a planning perspective to develop budgets. As the program develops and as we get into more detail, we start doing conceptual work, conceptual designs and preliminary designs. We we discover more information and more detail about the requirements of the overall program. In this case, at the outset, at the the initial phase, there was not a consideration for having a covered facility for charging at fifteen hundred Saint Laurent. It has become apparent that there is significant benefit to the city to have a covered garage for undertaking the charging. Given our, given our climate, given our weather. So that was, that was a significant additional amount that we've now included in our transition costs that was not there originally. There were also other amounts related to running of the program, related to staffing, training requirements and and also tools and equipment that are required once we have the full fleet on board to to ensure that they operate properly and that they're maintained properly. We we have a greater level of understanding now of what those costs are and and that also makes up that difference.
Okay, thank you. And on the change of funding available from the, from Infrastructure Canada, we have, how will that affect the overall long-term plans for the conversion of the diesel fleet to electric? Is there a a timing risk that we won't be able to do that as originally planned in twenty twenty-one?
You talk about the the risks now that with the shortened timeframe?
Basically, yes, yeah.
Our original application covered the period from twenty twenty-two, I believe, till twenty twenty-seven. And now that's shortened quite a bit from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six. So that also helped to confirm that three hundred and fifty ZEBs is much more feasible than four hundred and fifty. It helped us to re-scope that. In terms of the risks, if we don't achieve those timelines, did you want to speak to that?
We believe that the program that that we have, if we receive the green light now, that we will be able to achieve the infrastructure delivery and the delivery of the buses in the time frame, timeframe that we've provided up until twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven for the CIB funding. So we do believe it's achievable. But there there is a risk associated with, well, partly with delaying the the green light, but also the delivery of the program.
Okay, thank you. I had a question about the the actual report recommendations. So between two and number two and number three. Number two is a budget adjustment of fifty-five million, transferring funding from the twenty twenty-two approved bus replacement budget, so that's fine. Number three is about directing the general manager transit services to, through the annual budget process to make a similar, well, in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. So I just want to be clear, the twenty twenty-three year, has that been left out because we're going to be dealing that through the budget process in the month of February of this year?
That's correct. The twenty twenty-three budget, draft budget includes that second tranche. So we already have approval for the first tranche. It's the second tranche. We need approval in twenty twenty-three to purchase in twenty twenty-four. So it takes a year to purchase the buses.
So we'll see a line in the twenty twenty-three budget, zero emission bus program budget, and that's what that is.
It'll, it'll just say bus replacement and it's our portion, so it's the diesel portion.
Okay, okay. And the the ZEB program reserve, does that come into effect right away once council approves this? Like, are we able to take advantage of the four pilot buses or are those exempt from those those savings that we might achieve?
Yeah, the four are not included in that reserve and the intent is once the buses become operational. So that will probably be in the twenty twenty-four budget. We will need to start putting money aside. The money that we would have spent on maintaining diesel, put that aside in the reserve. Obviously, it's the net between that and what it will cost to maintain the ZEB. Put those in reserves and then manage it through the budget process to make sure that we're meeting our loan payments.
Okay, there've been a number of questions from councillors about future updates. And I think that's obviously an excellent idea and very much required. What is staff's plan on a year-by-year basis to keep commission and council up to date on the the progress of the program, maybe even emerging technologies around alternative technology buses? What can we expect over the next few years?
Chair, for sure, we will follow up on the current pilot and on the future e-buses. But we will continue to do benchmarking around the world with engineers, with the cities to see what kind of best technologies that we could propose and for sure, we'll let you know.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to work offline with you, Renee, as well, just to look at what form those updates could take and looking forward to staying up to date on this project. Thank you. Okay, are there any other questions from councillors? Councillor Brown?
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you very much to staff for the presentation. I'll keep my questions brief. As many of you know, I represent a very rural riding here in the city of Ottawa and I took my first bus ride in from Richmond this morning in four years and the first time ever on LRT and it was quite a smooth ride. But one of the challenges that residents in my ward have is certainly the distance of the commute and then the reliability of the service. And I believe on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, the report to commission indicated that there was a reduced range of electric buses compared to diesel. And I'm just wondering what mitigating solutions we might have to ensure that the two eighty-three and the one seventy-six routes that service my ward are impacted.
Chair, I will ask Pat Squimper to answer to that question, please.
Mr. Chair, the the current buses and any buses that would be purchased under the specifications that we're discussing with the TTC have ample range to cover multiple trips on any bus route in the OC Transport system.
Thank you very much. And my next question, if there is a change at the federal level and I I agree with my colleague that this is probably the best deal in town right now, but if anything changes and we're well into this stream and and converting our fleet, what what are our options if the federal funding dries up?
Are you asking for future funding? Because this one would be locked in with, there's a transfer payment agreement that will be signed for the three hundred and fifty million and then also the CIB loan. We have already signed that agreement. So those are signed agreements, but for future, we are looking for and continuously discussing with INFC and CIB for future programs to be able to continue to do this. One of the questions about the savings, like we would continue to do savings and this gives us an opportunity for in fifteen years to make sure that we do get savings. And maybe we won't rely on these things going forward, that we will have sufficient savings to help to pay for that difference.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Councillor, Councillor Hill, yeah?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick follow-up to to councillor Brown's comment. You mentioned, you know, looking forward, you know, a fifteen-year business model type construct and future funding. Are we making an assumption that future, like, are we setting the conditions where we are requiring to get future funding from other other levels of government where potentially there could be a change there? I just want to make sure that we're not setting the conditions where a decision today may be based on good intentions and and assumptions that may not come to fruition in six years, ten years.
Mr. Chair, that was part of my last comment to say that it would be wonderful to continue with additional funding in future phases. But it gives us fifteen years with the three hundred and fifty buses to actually look at how those savings can be achieved. And in future phases, we could actually, if we are confident after several years of operating these electric buses, that we do achieve those savings, we could actually just fund it ourselves with the difference. It's the the additional cost of putting the infrastructure, though, is that additional cost that we, it would be beneficial to get additional funding for.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Going once, going twice. All right, a really good discussion today and thank you again to councillors who are here and online and to all of our city staff and OC Transport staff. Appreciate all the information. We are going to do a recorded vote on this, so we'll go to Eric to help us with that.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, councillor Hill, would you like to wrap up before we finish? Yes, go ahead.
My my question was, if if I, if I'm correct, you're going to ask for a vote on the, on the four paragraph motion to go to council?
Sorry, that's correct. The recorded vote will be on the report recommendations and then they will rise to council on February first next week.
If I, if I wanted to make a motion to make a minor adjustment to that, now would be the time to do that, Mr. Chair?
Definitely would be in order if you have one, yes.
Okay, I I apologize. I don't have fancy wherebys or anything like that, but but my, the essence of what I would like to recommend, Mr. Chair, would be that we include a documented requirement for an annual opportunity, like you, like you alluded to in your comments, where we can make the decision as a Transit Commission and then council to potentially off-ramp if there is a problem with this process going forward. And in doing that, I think it would set, you know, the public's mind at ease that we're not locking ourselves into something that's going to be long-term. If there are problems with it, we can, we can make decisions on an annual basis. So so my recommendation is we we codify something that says we have the opportunity to make adjustments on an annual basis based on that that session, sir.
So can I recommend councillor Hill? I'll offer, if you and I could work together between now and council next week to refine the language around that and make sure we're capturing, capturing what you'd like and then it's something we could bring up at council next week.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Chair, I just, can I just jump in on that? I don't want to overly burden staff on this. I think we've had a lot of back and forth and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but is there not a yearly opportunity at Transit Commission? And I I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but is there not a yearly opportunity at Transit Commission when we're discussing the capital budgets and the forward purchases of um of of bus infrastructure to have that that very conversation annually? I think that's part of the process, right? So I I recognize that's have the conversation, but I don't want to burden with with, you know, a whole bunch of extra work that we are already have an opportunity to do every year as part of this commission.
Yeah, councillor Menard, I believe you are correct that there are other opportunities. So um perhaps if there's a way to clarify through perhaps the annual reporting process as well, there may be some different ways that we can uh we can make that more clear for uh for our council going forward. So on the four report recommendations that we will be um recommending to council, Eric will do a recorded vote.
Councillor Rockington. Councillor Carr.
Yes.
Councillor Hill.
Yes.
Councillor Leeper.
Yes.
Councillor Lowe.
No.
Councillor Menard.
Yes.
Councillor Tierney.
Yes.
Vice Chair Currie.
Yes.
Chair Gower.
Yes.
Seven yeas, one nay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have no other items on this agenda, so we are adjourned, and our next meeting is Thursday, February ninth. Thank you.